My camera here.
No, that's why when I saw you do that, I was like, I don't think there's that in that.
Of course they have it.
Shall we?
Is it, are we running?
We ready to go, Mike?
Everybody's good? You on the left, ready on the right?
Uh huh.
We're good.
Ready in the middle?
Let's go.
All right.
Let's clock this baby.
Okay. Well, welcome to the Medfield November fourth Select Board meeting. We are going to be conducting this meeting both in person and online, so it's a hybrid format. I would encourage all the people in the room that if you want to speak and say anything, you approach the lectern and identify yourself in your address and speak from there. And you'll notice that it doesn't amplify your voice. That's because it's the audio pickup for the Medfield TV. So don't speak loudly or anything or try to raise your voice. We can hear you just fine here. As we get started here, I'd like to just have a take a moment to of appreciation for our service members serving around the world in defense of our country. Thank you. Okay, we have a short agenda. This is gonna be a.
To hold jinx us.
Are there any major? You're the second person who said that last week.
Don't.
It looks like we don't have that many things to do. And so we'll try to get through it quickly. The first discussion item on our agenda is to just basically debrief the public on the outcome of our executive session last week. When we, I think we all took a lesson when we had the discussion around the basketball facility on south of Hospital Road. One of the things that came out was people in the public were concerned that we were having discussions and not keeping them informed. In fact, we did keep them informed. The very first meeting we had was the first public discussion we'd had. But nonetheless, I took a lesson from that and I thought that we might talk about briefly where we came out in last week's executive session. For most people, if there are people listening that would not know this, we were presented, the town was presented with an unsolicited proposed memorandum of understanding from a company called Flock Safety that is in the business of installing automated license plate readers. It goes, it's been in a lot of different places. Basically what it does is it allows, the equipment would allow law enforcement to basically read every car going by a camera, automatically download the identification of where that, who owns that car, and because there are multiple cameras, could track where that was going. We were presented with this MOU because, at least as we understood it, Matros was looking at installing a system and at least one resident of the town was looking at installing one in this memorandum of understanding would have allowed us to have, or allowed the police at least, to have free access to the information coming in on the cameras. After discussion and recognizing there's actually some controversy about this technology development across the country, we decided that that was not appropriate for us to sign that MOU at this time and declined to do it. On a personal level, I can say that the day before I had a preparatory conversation about this, I happened to drive up to Oxbridge to run an errand. It's about an hour long drive to get from Medfield to Oxbridge. And what I learned as a result of the conversation on this system is that I was under surveillance in four or five of the towns that I went through. I had no idea that that was the case, but I was stunned to find out that we actually live somewhere where we're seeing that kind of surveillance. And two of the towns with particular relevance, that's from Mills and Medway. So.
Doesn't Westwood have a tool?
I don't know if Westwood does it. I didn't drive through Westwood for sure, so if they do, I didn't drive through it. From, maybe I'll stop there and just let you two, if you have any comments, I just wanna make sure people.
No, I'm comfortable with what you said. I'm good.
I guess what surprised me was the chief explained to us that the technology allows pretty accurate tracking of individuals' movements. And so that that was the, for me, that was sort of a tipping point. There's no, we don't need the data to track individuals in our town.
Yeah, I would agree with that basic idea that I don't think we need a kind of a comprehensive surveillance state. But if members of the public really feel like that's the wrong thing, then you could talk to us and we could talk about that. But anyway.
Or you can go to our adjoining towns, which apparently will track you.
They'll track. Good track. Anyway, just so everyone knows why we met, what we did, and where we came out on the decision, that's it.
So I had actually heard about another tracking thing, that there's one of the stadiums in the country that uses face recognition software, and the owner of the team uses it to exclude any of the attorneys that have sued him.
There's a, there's a good purpose, puppet purpose.
Yeah. Well, you're that rich, I guess you can indulge yourself in all kinds of things.
Well, anyway, our sense was that we didn't think the residents or even the visitors to this town would particularly appreciate surreptitiously being monitored in everything they do. So we opted out.
I'm gonna pause for one second. Mike, he said they're giving a terrible feedback.
Okay.
Your line's off.
I don't hear any, there's no background.
Yeah, my microphone's off, I can tell. Testing, how are you doing?
How are you doing, Jeff?
Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three.
Anybody downstairs getting the same feedback? I see Georgia.
I did hear this past week that the Medfield TV generally has not been available recently. I hadn't been aware of that. And that the sound is generally pretty poor when it is available, so I would suggest keeping your microphones near your mouths.
Okay, can ask Jeff if he can hear us now.
Let us know, Jeff, if there's still a problem.
Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three.
See, this is that jinx we were talking about.
Yeah. Just 'cause we have a light agenda doesn't mean it's gonna be an easy meeting.
No, that was it.
It's good.
So there's a comment.
He says it's better.
Oh, is it feedback from the camera microphone?
Yeah.
There is a comment from Susan.
Thank you. Let's see, we have, I have a comment here from Chris Potts. Superintendent Marsden stated a number of years ago that he had implemented license plate readers with the Select Board have, with the Select Board have to have approved that. Chris Potts, Seven Curves Street.
Not, school property is under the purview of the school committee.
Yeah, but I would also say, to my knowledge, I didn't know that there were license plate readers. I think there is some difference. Chris, so the short answer is no, we did not approve it. Schools are under their own jurisdiction through the school committee. For what it's worth, I wasn't aware that we had that anywhere in town. But I could see how, I have no, I know that schools have security cameras, and so perhaps for that reason, anybody coming in, they have the videos. You'd have to check with the schools on exactly what that is. For sure, they're not, I don't think they have cameras going throughout town to track your every move till you move out to the next town, so. Any other, no other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Can I move on? Yes?
I'm good.
Only once. Going twice. Going three times. Okay. Our next item are a couple of board and committee appointments and acceptances of resignations. The first one is a request from the Board of Health to appoint Dr. Colleen Ryan Karodi as a full member of the Board of Health.
So moved.
Okay.
Before a second, I'll just say, I read her email, her credentials, I wrote a quick note back. I think it's fantastic. You know, someone that's lived here for quite some time, wants to volunteer her time and her expertise. That's awesome.
And I would echo that. It's actually pretty nice on a Board of Health to have the kind of qualifications where we're having on the Board of Health with people who are interested, so.
So a second?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye aye. Question on the term? The standard term?
It's the standard term, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye aye. Sorry.
Okay, posed. Okay. Next one is the request to accept a resignation from Jim Feeney from the 375th Anniversary Parade. I can probably do these two together, right?
Yeah.
So both Jim Feeney and Mark Fisher have submitted their resignations from the 375th Anniversary Parade Committee. I think we got, we gotta, I think Jim just indicated that he wanted to resign. Mark Fisher basically has taken on some significant challenges on the family side around getting a house ready for an extended family up in New Hampshire and so we, and I think indicated that he would continue to stay involved with the committee, just didn't want to have commitment on it.
Right.
So we appreciate what they both have done.
Yep.
And recognize that sometimes it's resignations just because you have too many things to do to keep up with it all.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Aye. Okay, those are all approved. Next is a vote to sign the Tree City Proclamation and Annual Application. And I can personally attest that that Tree City Proclamation was read clearly and loudly at Vine Lake Cemetery in front of the Sowerwood tree that was planted at the back entrance to the cemetery. It's a very nice tree. It's a small one. Bobby Kennedy indicated that it in fact is native to the Northeast. I did, because I was curious why it was called Sowerwood. It's also called a sorrel tree, and it has another name as well. And they're particularly, people like them for decorative, as decorative trees because they have attractive white flowers in the summertime and brilliant red leaves right now. So if anybody wants to see it, go in the Dale Street entrance and look for the really bright red small tree right on the corner as you're, you know, getting to that first intersection.
When did you do this?
Yesterday morning.
Well, he got a nice warm day.
I did.
I got stiff last year. It was like five below. That's why I'm like, you got to do it in the warm weather.
And the part of the proclamation that referred to the benefits of trees as for spiritual renewal, I said that loud enough to make sure all residents of Vine Lake Cemetery could hear that particular part, and I hope, I hope it's true. So, motion?
First, I would say that I'm shocked that the proclamation would have been read without the vote having been taken, but nonetheless, I will move to vote to sign the proclamation.
It was a contingent, it was a contingent, really.
A minor informality.
For the town councils.
That's why I did it till late in the year.
At the end, I muttered under my breath, "Subject to confirmation of the Select Board tomorrow."
Did you motion?
Kinda did, yeah. I think he, I think he did. Well, actually, he editorialized. He hasn't yet made the motion.
I did make the motion.
He's still struggling with the decision.
All right, my second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Okay.
So last year, we did it after. This year, we did it before. Next year, we're gonna have a meeting while Pete reads it?
We may do it, oh yeah, we may actually do it live. We could plan something here, actually.
I think, that's interesting. We obviously have gremlins here, 'cause my laptop just went down. It doesn't matter, I have this.
Yeah, they say.
Nobody has to look at me, that's all.
Yeah, it just dropped you off.
I mean, but my computer is literally.
Did? Did you not plug into something?
Oh, it is?
Are you checking to make sure it's?
Yeah, well, it's plugged in there.
See, now, remember this presentation I made about the capital budget and needing new furniture with plugs? It's what you're saying.
You're getting complaints from me. I hate this team.
Well, at any rate, this is a short meeting, and people are probably happy to be spared. Next, vote to authorize the town administrator to sign the annual green communities report.
And that is due on Friday, and it is currently being worked on as we speak.
Okay. Is this, is this the Energy Committee's annual report? So in the past, the Board, I'm quite happy to have that happen, but the very first time, I think I was asked to sign the report, I basically said, oh, I'm not gonna sign it until I've read it. And now this time, it's up to you on how you're gonna sign that. The reason I bring it up is not because I'm being an administrative nudge, it's because I was glad that I asked to read the report before I signed it, because I, if you don't read the report, you have no idea of how much the Energy Committee has done and how much they've achieved for the town. Parts of the report are cumulative impact. So whether you read it thoroughly before you sign it, I would encourage everyone to read the report.
We'll send out to everybody. It's, they've also, I think when you reviewed it last, it was the ginormous spreadsheet. Now it's a, it's basically an online portal.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Much easier to read.
Okay.
So we can send you up and it's much easier to track.
And I'd encourage members of the public that wanna, you know, if you're care, to read it, it's worth it. The Energy Committee's done a lot of good work over a number of years. Pete, you've obviously had.
Saved the town a ton of money, millions.
So we have a vote to let Christine sign the report.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Aye. Okay. Next, we are, we're already at the consent agenda. This is great. We have three items on the consent agenda. First, a request to use the front lawn of the townhouse during the holiday stroll for activities like smores making stations. Second, request to sign in the usual places to promote the annual Lowell Mason House Holiday Concert on Saturday, December 6th, 2025, for the two weeks leading up to the event. And third, request on behalf of Medfield Lions Club Christmas Tree Committee to post signs at the usual locations advertising Christmas Tree sales in the back parking lot of St. Edward's Church for the two-week period leading up to November 29th.
So a quick question on that one. So the holiday stroll, just to clarify, in theory, there's gonna be no cars parked along Main Street because we're gonna be shutting down traffic, or will people be parking, but then they won't be able to move because we're shutting down?
Yes.
So we're working on that with some of the businesses who may have like a late afternoon lunch crowd. We're working with them on being able to get the cars out of that area.
Okay, and the reason I'm even asking that is, I love the idea of Parks and Rec is gonna do like a smores station. In previous years, you were dealing with traffic and all the craziness, so that would be phenomenal, and it gives them that much more room if they don't have to deal with cars and people. So that's fantastic.
Yeah, it'd be much better.
Okay. I second.
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. We don't have any gifts. Does the citizen present have any comment? No. Then the last action item we have here is to discuss the approval of the meeting minutes. We have actually six of them. January 7th, 2025, January 21st, 2025, February 4th, 2025, February 13th, 2025, February 18th, 25, 2025, and February, which is just literally the minutes of going into an executive session, so that one's minor. And February 25th, 2025. Discussion?
Well, I was gonna say, maybe we hold these.
Yes.
There was some concern about the AI transcripts and how they were being collected, so I think.
You guys might not have picked up on like certain, because I do YouTube and watch them.
Mm-hmm.
She was really active. There were, they're quoting her, they quoted, they quoted Pete many a times when it was you.
Yep.
So however that's being trans.
That was true, and then I thought Katie was called out as.
Christine. Yeah, she was the chief before that.
Why don't we hold? We'll send them off to Cameron to take a look at.
Okay.
And then I second almost for the, for January 7th, the entire time I seconded, and now it's chair, so it's hard to do. And then for almost all votes on the 24th, and then I stopped doing it 'cause I'm like, there's a problem here, and like it's weakened.
Okay. So that's good. The one that was the most off the rails, the only one that I thought really was problematic, but I didn't do it against the videos like you did, was the January 21st, which had the duplicate section on.
Yes. Duplicate.
Yeah. Although it wasn't the same.
But it wasn't duplicate, because she never talked.
It was written twice.
Yeah, well, it was, it was almost like it got pulled from another meeting, 'cause she did talk about the coffee thing at another meeting. So I was like, this is really weird. I watched it a few times, and I was like, okay, there's something on there.
So they're all defer, we'll defer all of them then.
I would defer all, we'll have Cameron go through them all.
Okay. Great.
So this is bad. It's saying on my screen that the Medfield TV bandwidth is low.
On your screen?
Well, because we're on the town.
On Zoom.
Right. It's would be the town bandwidth, I think, then. So that's why I think it's bad.
I'm not getting that notification, but that's.
Yeah, where are you getting that message on your screen?
But that's not surprising.
It's not there now, but it was there a second ago, so.
Are you getting that it's unstable?
It just said low, was the word it used.
Yeah, mine's strong.
If it does again, I'll take a picture of it.
There is an item in the capital budget to upgrade the Wi-Fi at the town hall, just not intentional, just a coincidence.
It's doing it again right now, Chris.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, mine's not, that's weird.
I'll take a picture of it for you.
Yeah, that would be great.
Town administrator update tonight?
I have quite a few updates I wanna go through with you tonight. One, as you know, Brittany and I have a side job as day traders when it comes to our energy. And Brittany and Michael really worked on the gas, our gas contract had ended after three years, so we were looking to renew. So our contract over last year's contract is 70% higher in our gas rates. We anticipated that when we did the fiscal year 26 budget, and we had forecasted a 75% increase, so we're gonna about break even in that for our budget. Part of that was our contract was so low three years ago that we're now catching up with the market, and obviously everything that's going on in the global economy is impacting those gas rates. We signed a 13-month contract. We can break that contract, and Power Options is our consultant, and so they have advised us to look again in February and see what the market is, and if it's a significantly better rate, depending on how we're doing in the winter, we'll break our current contract and sign up for a new contract with them. So we did lock in because the rate was going up and we were getting nervous we would pass what we had budgeted.
Is there a penalty to get out of that contract?
No.
Okay.
So what, so we've locked into a current contract at a significantly higher rate with the option of, we can get out of it if we need to.
We can get out of it, yep. So we'll take, no pun intended, take the temperature in February, see what it's like, and then we'll make a decision as we get closer. The problem is the 13 months ends in December, which is the wintertime. We're trying to get that to be more summertime renewal of that rather than at winter. But the good news is that our day trading days are coming to an end because we have made an offer to an energy manager today. So we're hoping to have that person onboard. As you know, we have a three-year grant for that position, and at the expiration of that grant, we have an offer from the town of Sharon and the town of Norwood to join with them and make it a three-town district.
Oh, good.
Which will be great. So we've been trying to, once we bring somebody on a grant, what's our exit ramp for what we're gonna do in that three years? So I think this will be a great opportunity. And they will continue to work with Susan McPhee on our green communities, but it'll be great to have somebody 15 to 20 hours a week dedicated to us. And if anybody has seen the work, this person also actually does work for Sharon and Norwood now, so it's been really great, the work that they've been able to accomplish. So we're super excited about that. I just wanted to let all three of you know, last Wednesday before I left for the weekend, I was notified by Toll Brothers via phone that they have decided to move forward with the project that Pulte had originally come to. that they have decided to move forward with the project that Pulte had originally come to talk to you about, that's in Dover Sherburne.
Oh, right on Evergreen.
Yep, they're coming back. The Toll Brothers is for between 42 and 44 homes. They asked if we were interested, again, in selling water. I explained that both the Water and Sewer and Select Board had no interest in supplying water to Dover for a private development. And they essentially hung up. I don't know if we'll hear more from them. I did hear from the town manager in Dover who said they have been in contact with them and are trying to get the project to move forward, but the sticking point to the project is.
Yeah, we're not obligated to give them zero.
Who's trying to get the project to move forward? Dover?
No, Dover just let me know that they were.
Dover doesn't have the choice because it's 40B.
It's 40B, yep. Let's see, just a reminder that our meeting on November, November 18th, we'll be looking at Select Board goals. We've had some private, some public comment come in, and so we urge people to, we're continuing to collect those comments, or they're welcome to come in person that night and give us their comments.
In the departments, I watched the warrant committees, I know they have two suggestions for us.
They've sent some suggestions in, department heads have all been sending their suggestions in, so.
So is it planned that night to, to share those suggestions?
Yes, we're gonna share them with you in advance of the meeting so that you have time to digest them. Because we've kind of been collecting them along the way, and then we'll give you a whole packet of public comments. I would tell you that one of the comments we've received from everybody is they're much easier to read now. So they've appreciated the change in format, so, which is good. We are targeting a December 2nd Select Board meeting. Will also be a joint meeting with the school committee and the warrant committee, which is finalizing everybody's calendars, but we're targeting that date. And we will move that meeting to the High School Library Media Center. We're gonna need a little space that night. And December 2nd will also be the tax rate classification hearing, so we'll be doing that as well.
What will that be?
The tax rate classification hearing.
Oh, tax rate classification, okay.
And we'll have a broader budget discussion that night, but I know you've seen the warrant committee, you've seen mine, you know about that, so we are working on that. Just to bring to everybody's attention, the sidewalk improvements have started. So you're gonna see them working out today, I think they were working on the ADA ramps, and then you're gonna see the new crosswalks going in at Park Street Books and at Montrose, so.
So I saw this one coming out of the town hall today when I took the back road. So where, today there's a diagonal crosswalk, that gets removed and it's a straight?
It's gonna be straight, much shorter, better sightline for people to see.
Okay.
Kids and town hall employees crossing the street. And then the last thing I had to mention was just, if anybody is concerned about a loss or a reduction in SNAP benefits, please contact Medfield Outreach. They have some referrals set up on their social media pages, and they're also in contact with Food Cupboard. If anybody needs anything, they can go directly through Kathy and Medfield Outreach. That's it for tonight.
Colleen?
Well, I didn't just use.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm going too fast, it's such a, such a.
I was gonna do it for you if you wanted to.
Throw this into fourth gear, but okay. Yeah, the next meeting dates we have out through the end of the year, the next one is November 18th, and then we have two in December on the 2nd and then the 16th. And I think you've already given previews of the agendas for the 18th and the 2nd. What are we doing on the 16th?
Brittany's in charge, I will be on vacation, so Brittany will be running that meeting, so.
All right.
All right.
Excellent.
So this is, this will be our own version of Medfield's Got Talent.
All right, since we last met, I went to our Affordable Housing Trust meeting, where we just reviewed, I mean, the topics that we're hitting on these days is kind of what's the status over Plain Street, what's happening with Rose Bay, no significant movements. Matter of fact, Maria's gonna find out if there's any new updates, especially on Rose Bay, and then we will have an Affordable Housing Trust meeting on Thursday. Otherwise, as of today, she doesn't think we will because she doesn't expect an update in the next 24 hours. I was here judging pumpkins, I don't know if you two gentlemen saw the pumpkins that the various departments created. They left an opening because Frank wasn't here this year. They were really good, they were very, very good.
They were great.
And it's so funny, because other than Marion's, I couldn't tell you what department did, well, I take that back, I knew the school department because they put Jeff as, what was that character?
He's Willy Wonka.
Willy Wonka. If you looked really closely, it was actually a picture of Jeff. That was really fun, so that was nice. We are continuing to have our Friday morning capital budget meetings, some rather intense conversations, and I think we'll, as a board, see that when we start talking about where we are with funding going into next year. I got a call today from Becca Rouse, she's given me a heads up that she's looking to be doing a fundraising event for her next campaign in early December, so hoping that I would be able to attend and help support that. And then I'm going tomorrow on the school building committee, we're going to do our second tour of a new school that was built by the MSBA, we're heading over to Ashland. So we did one back in October for the Pine Hill School in Westwood, which was super informative, and now we'll go head over to Ashland, so. And I think, and then you guys, we all got a letter, so we do have another Eagles Court coming up, January 10th. So I meant to bring a copy of that letter, I'll send that, so you guys can have that ready in December. And I think that's it.
The Medfield Foundation had a couple of things going on. The Legacy Fund met and planned a reception for the grantees for December 9th and decided to go forward with an annual appeal, so look forward to getting a letter to ask to donate to make Medfield a better place in the future. The Medfield Foundation has the Angel Run coming up on December 7, Sunday, December 7, at 11:30 at the high school, which raises money for basically public purposes in Medfield, people in need and other needs of the town of Medfield. Leanne LaBelle and I went to both the Dale Street School and the Wheelock School and spoke to all of the kids about the Angel Run. So in a matter of an hour and a half at each school, we probably spoke to 400 kids. There were like 150 or grades, so I guess we spoke to around 600 kids. And Leanne did another school, another day when I wasn't with her, so that she spoke to maybe 750 kids. To tell them about the Angel Run, to encourage them to take part, I encourage you all to take part.
I am registered.
This year, you can do it as teams, you can form a team. Chris, you can have a town hall team and and you can compete. And then the other thing was that I went to the memorial service last night for Charlie Glue, and it was really fun, nice to see such a large turnout for Charlie and Sandy and.
Very touching, that's right.
I made it over there, I was on, I didn't see Sandy.
What I would say about Charlie was, I met Charlie through, Richard DeSorga had us doing mini-town halls. And Charlie and Sandy invited me into their home, and, and that's when I met them. And what I discovered was Charlie was exceedingly bright and curious and interested. And, and again, I, I think it was Richard that talked about people, I think he used Thomas Jefferson's term, that people were active citizens, I think is what he would call them. But I would say that Charlie was my most, in the Jeffersonian terms, my most active constituent. He was just very focused on what the town was doing and had a lot of great insights for me, so. And that's it.
I had, I guess it was last week, we had the MBTA Advisory Board, Brian Kane and his staff came. As part of an overall tour, they were reaching out to all the communities, which was kind of impressive. I don't know that the MBTA Advisory Board has ever done that before. They just came to visit to kind of hear what concerns we had. As a, as a town that doesn't have its own MBTA station or anything like that, I think our concerns are probably a little bit lighter than some of the other towns that are, can, you know, want better service or better stations and things like that. So it was a, it was a pleasant conversation, we had some pictures that were taken, so they're here somewhere. And it was nice, it was nice to, you know, to see them here. It's, I, I know Brian from, as the town's rep on the advisory board, he's the one that's responsible kind of for the advisory board, and I've been impressed over the years that his, his style, you know, in a position like that, you're obviously working with the legislature and the, and other people in government, and you need to have a strategically effective political style that it doesn't make you obnoxious, and he's really good at that. He's also really good at dealing with the board, so. And anyway, that, that was kind of a nice visit. I also, I forwarded the email to, I think, all of you here. The Council on Foreign Relations, for reasons that I don't know why, has a small, a local government segment of what it does. I'm not sure how I got put on the distribution, maybe you, maybe we all did, I'm not sure, but I periodically will get emails announcing various webinars. And the webinars they run are truly, the ones that I hear about are truly intended to be local government-type issues, which, given that it's the Council on Foreign Relations, you kind of think they'd be talking bigger, bigger, more strategic and more national things. But they do, and they, the ones that I've gone to have been good. The particular one that they had was, the title was State and Local Officials Webinar, AI Policy, Global Stakes, Local Governance. And so particularly in light of the discussions that we've had around here, around AI-assisted surveillance, I was kind of interested to see what they'd come up with. The webinar started off as I sort of guessed it was going to, with more of an economic development tilt to it. You know, what can local governments do to encourage businesses that have various products they're developing? One of the speakers was, I think, a professor, and his focus was more on business and even global business. The other person, though, was, works for the state of Utah. And basically, she's in a state position where they, I think partly they're trying to figure out how to make sure that Salt Lake City and the rest of Utah is a, is a business-friendly area for, because they already have a pretty good high-tech base there. But toward the end, she got asked what were the main priorities, and I was happy to see that she called out that one of the big things that they're focused on is figuring out the proper approach for regulating AI. Basically, it's a technology that has popped up and spread so quickly that, and it's having impacts, as you can see, even in the things that we're talking about here, around privacy, around surveillance, around law enforcement. And, and basically, it's, it's here and it's growing faster than even state governments have reck, they haven't even recognized the issues in some cases, much less create regulatory regimes for not just killing things, but to, you know, figure out the right way to properly let them grow. So interesting discussion, I guess it's reassuring, well, I don't know if it's reassuring to know that nobody's really figured it out at the government level on what to do with some of this stuff, but at least none of us should feel alone. Bill, you have to give Bill his shout-out here. Bill Saros' Halloween display, again, I can attest, was up to par, even, even with the inclement weather and the wind. That is, that's a go-to place on Halloween, if you don't know about. And he mentioned tonight to me, but I actually had already heard that it's so popular. Is it 30, how many years, Bill?
38.
38 years, I thought, yeah. 38 years he's been doing it. What that means is that there are now adults bringing their children, I think some of them even from out of town, if I recall you giving me the anecdotes of the past, who as little kids used to live here and would go to Bill's house, they now are driving to Medfield to go to Bill's house on Halloween night. So, and, and I, and it appears that you didn't run out of candy or anything like that, so.
If the bus shows up next year, you're paying for the candy.
But if you keep the wine flowing, Bill, that's probably fair exchange.
I can wrap that next year.
Yeah, and then the last item is, yesterday, as Pete pointed out, I, I was the official proclaimer of the Arbor Day Proclamation for the town upon the planting of the tree in Vine Lake Cemetery, a Sowerwood tree. And I did, I did my best, I didn't even use my glasses and I managed to not stumble my way through it. That's what I got.
Okay.
Move, oh, no, not adjourned.
All right, second that.
I actually don't have the.
What's that?
I don't have the script for our, we're gonna be adjourned, we will be adjourned, there we go. Okay, let's see. The Select Board needs to, so we're gonna, for those who are keeping score out there, we're gonna be closing this meeting and going into executive session, and then the meeting will conclude at the end of the executive session. The Select Board needs to meet in executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. I declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Select Board. The open session will not reconvene at the conclusion of the executive session.
I move that the Select Board meet in executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. The Chair has declared that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Select Board. The open session will not reconvene at the conclusion of the executive session.
Second?
Second.
Okay, let's see. Select Board Member Murphy?
Yes.
Select Board Member Peterson?
Aye aye.
And Select Board Member Mirby?
Aye.
So we will be closing out here, and we'll see you all in two weeks.
Fair enough, thank you.